To the flag of the United States of America and to tribute to others for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we'll go through roll call. Mayor Morder is absent. Councilmember Sterns, councilmember Stackless.
Here.
Councilmember Ingstrom.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wagner.
Here.
For tonight, we have a presentation, and I'd like to introduce Ethan Garrett, who's the General Services Manager for Siskiyou County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. Welcome.
Thank you for having me, guys. This will be quick. So, we've been working on a fuel reduction project out at Lake Siskiyou, and we're about to start the project in October, approximately, we think, in October. This is on the back of our NTMP, our Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan.
Ethan, can you please talk into the mic, because we're recording also?
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is on the back of our NTMP, which was signed in 2005 with multiple agencies, the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, and the California Department of Fish and Game. The primary objectives of this NTMP are to reduce fuels, maintain the forest health, and promotion of wildlife diversity. The project that we're talking about right now is the Lake Siskiyou Fuel Reduction Project, and as I said, it's planned for a start date of October of 2018. And the efforts in this project include reducing the number of trees per acre in order to allow the remaining stand to receive more sunlight, nutrients, and water. This will help the stand overcome drought, bug infestation, and fire outbreak. And if you guys did, I can let you guys use this real fast. I just want to show you some of the, just one of the attributes of our fuel reduction. The handout that I gave you guys, there's before and after photos of some of our prior fuel reduction projects, and as you can see, most of it is biomassing and submerged timber. It's pretty much just clearing so that there's no fire outbreak. And the one important thing I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of, that when we start this project in October on North Shore Road, we ask that no civilians enter that area during the time of the project, and we anticipate, we try to miss all of the heavy season, heavy usage, so October to around April, April 30th is when we're assuming the project to be completed.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Where would the roadblock be?
Um, you know where we put the roadblock?
The roadblock is right there, around the corner of Speedy Point.
Gotcha. Right around the corner of the Speedy Point.
So, before the bridge?
Before the bridge.
Oh, okay.
Correct?
That's after the bridge.
The block, and so if it's in the same location as before, the edge of the street is on the, the bridge that comes down.
Oh, yes.
So, it's in the bridge area.
Okay, so you can still put in, if we have a boat, you can still put in past the, there's an area there, there's a little parking lot that's still open.
No, it's the speed point though. It would be the main open over on the other side, near the end there.
Okay. Do you understand what I'm talking about, though? It's basically if you drive, I think it's past the bridge, you go past the bridge, and then there's a little parking lot before the North Shore, way up, North Shore is like way all the way up that.
We're talking with, there's a bathroom facility as well, it's a pretty large landing pad right there for parking.
Yeah.
You will not be able to utilize that.
You can't use that, okay. All right.
Any other questions?
So, you anticipate the process will be going on for a period of about six months?
Close to six months, yes.
Okay. And be over with by April?
That's what, well, we stop everything May 1st, regardless of if it's complete or not.
Okay. And will it just be on the North Shore side, or?
So, we are doing a 50-acre plot northeast of the Lake Siskiyou Lodge. That's mostly going to just be biomass reduction.
Thank you. Do you have more to say?
Nope, that's it. Unless there's any other questions.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next is public comment, so if anybody's here from the public that'd like to address anything that's on the consent agenda or not on as an agenda item for today's meeting. Thank you, Ethan. You're welcome to come forward at this moment, anybody, any public comment at this time. Okay, closing public comment, moving on to the next item. We have council and staff comments. Who would like to go first?
I will, thank you.
City manager.
So, last week, Chief Mello and I attended a Forest Service meeting here at 6:00 PM. It was advertised as an update to the Hertz fire. They gave us a lot of background of what they had, but they, the Forest Service had been doing in terms of fighting fires, status of the fire. Also, there was a great deal of discussion about emergency evacuation plans, and what the different roles of the different agencies would be. And I think it pointed out there's some need for serious discussion between agencies. It was, I left with the direct impression that Sheriff Lope thought he would be evacuating the city, and that'd be nice if he was giving his free police services, but I don't think that was his intent. So, there was, I think, not a clear understanding between agencies, so we're working on that.
Can you specify what agency you'd like to see work better together?
Forest Service, city, and sheriff. Those are, we have to begin with our fire department, our police department, because we're all going to be players should there be a major incident here. So, I think they gave the public a lot of information, so I thought it was worthwhile meeting from that respect. And I'd like Matt to do the rest of the discussion.
Anything we can do about the hum? No, okay. It's a little annoying.
Yes. That's good.
So, what I heard today on, we looked up on Facebook before I got here, we are not in any evacuation plan whatsoever. I was called by the incident today and asked if the city had done that. We had not. There's a certain member of the public that put it on Facebook that we're at a Level One. There is no such thing as a Level One, that's in Oregon. We may go to that in the next few years at different levels. We are at a warning and a mandatory, the handout that we gave out a couple weeks ago, that's what it clarifies. We are not, everybody should always be ready to evacuate. That's what Sheriff Lope was trying to point out. We are in no way, shape, or form in any kind of an emergency at this point. The fire is still, I think, 15 miles from us, and 11 miles from McLeod, it's going up a different drainage. They did go into unified command as of today, they're going to move their base camp to McLeod, I think Wednesday, they said. So, there will be a base camp in McLeod because it's too far to go back and forth. So, you will see a lot of activity. I did talk to the Forest Service team today, I think it's Region Five Team or something they call them, and Team Five from Cal Fire when they go into unified command. We are going to be notified on everything they do from now on. We're going to get the relationship better with the Forest Service and the city of Mount Shasta, and also with the sheriff's office. So, I just wanted to put that out there that we are in no danger at the present time. If it comes to us needing to evacuate, we will let the residents know in Mount Shasta.
Yeah, and obviously, it comes, if it's not an instant fire, if it's a fire traveling our way, certainly we would have a warning first.
This one would definitely.
24 to 48-hour warning.
Correct.
And then we would, if we needed to.
Yes, this one would definitely have a warning. Like you said, if we have a fire that starts in the city, you may not have a 24-hour warning. We try to do that if a fire like this, definitely. We won't wait.
So, for the public, can you define what Level One is?
There is no such thing in California as a Level One. There's a warning and a mandatory.
So, in Oregon, Level One is?
Level One is be prepared, ready, set, go, as it says in our book.
Ready, it's ready, okay.
So, be ready, but you should always be ready to go, have your papers, your pictures and everything in a box, or what have you, like it explains in the pamphlet.
Anything else?
Yes, I have some really good news, which, oh, sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe Kathy sent out a email Friday about we were awarded two different grants, which in total is $429,860. The first one is the AFG grant, which is for 28 self-contained breathing apparatus. We did have a meeting today with the Fire Association, they would like to donate $5,000 towards the matching funds, so the city's share would only be $2,956. Same with the district. So, that cut that down quite a ways. The other one was a SAFER grant, which is a big one for us, it's huge in this county. We are one of the first ones to get this. I think Fort Jones got the very first one in the county. It's the one we had the special meeting on about hiring two firefighters. So, that one total is $211,603, and the city's share would be $131,537 over the three-year period. We are already moving forward with this, we are going out to bid for the packs as we speak, or we're getting quotes back from our vendor. We've got most of the stuff done for the firefighter positions. Again, if the council remembers, you did do a letter of support, so we're moving forward very quickly with this. We have 180 days to get folks on board, that's our cutoff, and we had 30 days, I believe, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, to get this signed and back to them, so that's been completed. So, we are moving right along. Again, this is very exciting. I really want to thank Kathy Wilson, she took the lead on this. Again, there was a ton of help from the whole city, but she actually took the lead on both of these grants, we actually put in for three, she got two out of the three, and she got the highest dollar ones. So, thank you very much, Kathy, again, for all your work. Appreciate it. She told me she was going to beat me up if I did this tonight, but she deserves to definitely be recognized for what she's done. So, in that, that's all I have.
Any other staff reports?
That would, I guess, conclude staff reports.
Conclude staff reports. Any council comments? Seeing none, I just want to mention that these brochures for the public, the Mount Shasta Wildfire Safety Guide, did go out to all the residents. If you do not have a copy, please stop by the city hall and pick up a copy for yourself. Also, I just want to mention the general plan visioning survey is due September 14th. The more input we have on the survey from our community, the better our general plan will be. So, I do have some hard copies, if anybody's interested in filling out a copy currently, there are also copies in the office, and it's available online as well. And this brochure, the, sorry, I meant to mention, the Wildfire Safety Guide is also on the website, under Community. Moving on, we're going to the consent agenda. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items, all resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added here too shall be introduced or adapted, sorry, adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, item A, approval of minutes, August 2nd, 2018, special city council meeting, August 13th, 2018, regular city council meeting. Item B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 10, sorry, 810 and 816, 2018, total gross payroll and taxes for period ending 812, 2018. And item C, monthly financial investment report. Do I hear motion?
Move that the council approve, consent agenda numbers A, B, and C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All approved of the consent agenda. Item eight is public hearing, authorizing the special assessments for the fire department equipment funding special tax, and the reports by Muriel Howard, sorry, Howarth Terrell. Are you going to, are you going to give a report on the item?
Number eight?
I'm sorry. Item number eight?
I was off in La La Land. I'm reporting what? Oh, yes. The fire district assessment. Thank you. Thanks, Rod. This is something that comes to council every year, it's a, an assessment that's assessed on each parcel within the city, whether it be improved or unimproved lots. This is just a, this is something that we have to do each and every year that goes to the council, and there needs to be a public hearing, so we'll have to do a public hearing. So, if there were anyone here that wanted to speak about that, this would be their opportunity to do so. Other than that, just, this is just a, something, like I said, that comes to us each and every year for that, that fire assessment for equipment.
Any clarifying questions?
Yeah, what's the, what's the rate? Is it an ad valorem assessment, or is it just a flat rate?
It's just, it's just a flat rate for unimproved lots, and a flat rate for improved lots, they're different. And then there's a flat rate for commercial, a commercial lot, and a flat rate for an improved commercial lot.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we're opening for public comment, if anybody here present would like to speak about this hearing. I'm seeing no from the audience, so we'll close public hearing, I mean, sorry, public comment.
Public hearing.
Closing the public comment for the public hearing. Are you ready to do a motion?
So, technically, you opened a public hearing?
I opened a public hearing, Hank.
And you have now, since there's no one to comment, you have formally closed the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
It's back to council.
Open and close the public hearing, back to council for discussion or motion.
Ask what the resolution number would be?
CCR 18-45.
All right. Move approval of Resolution CCR 18-45, Resolution City Council, the city of Mount Shasta, authorizing special assessments for the fire department equipment funding special tax for 2018, 2019 tax roll, and authorizing the mayor to execute certification by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous approval, sorry, unanimous approval. Tim Sterns motioned, John Stackless seconded, all approved. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding crosswalks in the city, report by Rod Bryant, Public Works Director.
Thank you. So, council requested this to come back for discussion, it most recently came up as a consideration under the Alma Street Signal Replacement Project. We had proposed a solution, one of the solutions for increasing visibility at one particular crosswalk in town at the intersection of Alpine and South Mount Shasta Boulevard at the post office. There was some discussion about it, and basically, council, I believe, wanted a little bit more information. So, what we tried to do with this staff report is just provide, again, previous staff reports, technical memos, discussions, field observations and studies, and other documents, including staff, previous staff reports, for council to once again consider and make a recommendation or have, have further discussion on the possible alternatives. It was previously recommended that we provide a rectangular rapid flashing beacon solution to adding visibility to this particular crosswalk. There were a number of other improvements considered, but were considered not feasible due to either cost or road geometrics, things of that nature. Some of those other solutions included providing a center island or median, installing a signal, making a signalized intersection, that's a pretty extreme solution, but would certainly improve crosswalk safety, reducing the street crossing distance or other traffic calming measures, eliminating parking to improve visibility, improving nighttime lighting, and then supplementing the crossing with, with warning signs, such as the proposed solution of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. There, most were, most of those, again, were impractical to implement. So, so we've outlined basically five options for the Alpine Street Crosswalk. First one is do nothing, leave it as it is. There are no known pedestrian accidents at that location. Another option would be to remove the crosswalk, pedestrians could still cross at that location, but would not have that false sense of security that a crosswalk may provide to some pedestrians, could encourage them to cross at their own risk and be more aware of when they are, what they are doing. Installation of the flashing beacons or a similar type warning device, or simply more studies and evaluation, those are basically the five answers. I think staff is just looking for direction at this point. It's been discussed numerous times, and we've previously, again, recommended a flashing beacon to improve visibility, particularly for southbound vehicles that are making the corner and not seeing pedestrians until it's too late. This rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the city engineer and myself feel that that's the most cost-effective solution, and would provide advance warning before southbound vehicles rounded that corner, before they could even see the crosswalk, they would get bright LED flashing lights, letting them know that a pedestrian has activated the signals in that crosswalk and are attempting to cross. According to the literature that we're looking at, the RRFPs, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, have produced 80, 90% driver compliance and yielding to pedestrians at high-risk uncontrolled crossings. So, they do have a certain amount of efficacy to them. But at this point, it's really up to council's pleasure what they would like us to do, if anything. I will say that the rectangular rapid flashing beacon option, we estimated to be around $13,000 for equipment, I believe that was equipment and installation. You know, and that's, that does cut into our, our gas tax money that is dwindling, and there's not enough of it to, you know, maintain the streets we have. So, this would cut into that money, so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the alternatives, or any other questions that council may have.
Clarifying questions from council?
So, the gas tax money, what is left? What is the balance in that account, so to speak, ballpark?
I have no idea what the balance would be at this point.
And $13,000 would then, if it, if it's that meaningful because of such limited funds, what would have to be eliminated to pay for that? You know, what would you have to give up?
Street maintenance.
Like doing more tar and gravel type things?
We're doing, we're doing right now $100,000 to $125,000 worth of chip seal every year.
Right.
But I believe we're spending more than we have coming in, we recently did a spreadsheet, I didn't bring that, but SB 1 helped a little, gave us a little bit extra money, but as we know, that, that could be repealed as well, so, yeah, there's just, and the stip money that we're getting, you know, is not a lot, and it takes years and years, years to get a project funded, so that's not a super reliable funding source. So, the question, I guess, with, with respect to this particular crosswalk is, do we feel that it's, it's a high enough risk at this point to warrant spending funds on it? And I've tried to provide as much detail as I can to help you make that decision.
Rod, I appreciate that. Want to ask our risk management folks, which I think would be Bruce and Muriel, if SCORE has weighed in on this issue, I recall years ago that we did remove some of the crosswalks, I think at SCORE's recommendation. And have we consulted with SCORE as to this crosswalk, whether they would recommend, whether SCORE would recommend using the flashing light, which I think may be a reasonable alternative, or whether that's creating potential greater liability?
So, I have not personally discussed this with SCORE. The study you refer to, the city had done some years ago, and if, from, based on what I've been told of the study, it recommended that you eliminate crosswalks because of the false sense of security, and the city did, in fact, eliminate some crosswalks. Now, unless Muriel is taking this to SCORE, she's shaking her head no, so the answer would be no, SCORE has not been consulted.
All right. I think it might be prudent for the.
Questions, clarification questions, then we have public comment after.
Do you think it would be prudent to perhaps contact SCORE prior to council taking action on this matter?
Well, it's a question of liability. SCORE would, you know, typically an underwriter, your insurance carriers look at things, based on data, what's happened here, what's the evidence, and the evidence is there's no problem. So, it'd be, it's hard to rate the risk factor here decided.
SCORE doesn't typically take a look at each individual crosswalk in any particular city. There would need to be, as Bruce pointed out, data on that, that specific one, and that would bring it higher into the risk criteria where they, they would perhaps look at something like that. But they don't, they don't do an assessment on individual cities' crosswalks, per se.
And to clarify, there's been no incident at, we're talking about the Berryville Crosswalk, right? You're right, there's been no injuries?
Not that, as far as the police department records. Could, could the police department records did not, I think they only went back a certain time period, but they had no injuries or fatalities at that crosswalk? I believe that's in the staff report somewhere.
Okay, I'm wondering, since there's a residence right across the street from Berryville, have you checked with that residence to see whether, what their point of view would be about installing a flashing light that they could see from their living room? You talked, you said, you mentioned a bright LED flashing light, so I'm just wondering, is it, is that an ideal location to put a flashing light if it's going to go right into a residential window? And then I'm wondering if, did you, I know my visits to Ashland, they have something on the street that flashes across the crosswalk, did you, did you consider that type of design? And then, is that a lot more difficult to do?
Sure. So, no, residential, sorry, that was not considered, the LED for residential. It's, the, all the windows of the residence would be parallel to the road, and, and these lights wouldn't be facing towards the residence, they'd be facing towards oncoming north and southbound traffic. That really wasn't a consideration. The, the main goal here was safety of the pedestrians and improving visibility to motorists with, yeah, bright LED flashing lights, so you, I guess you can't have it both ways. yeah, bright LED flashing lights, so you, I guess you can't have it both ways. They're either going to be bright lights flashing, or to warn the motorists, or not at all. So, it's a trade-off there. In-ground, I believe you're referring to, in-ground LED lights were not considered. I didn't get any information on it at all. It's not been a solution that I feel was a good fit for Mount Shasta. They do make snowplow-approved, recessed, in-ground lighting. My personal opinion is I think they'd be problematic, and it would be more difficult to install. But I don't know how much more difficult, I don't know how much the, how effective they are, and again, it would be the same bright LEDs flashing north and south. Granted, they'd be at ground level versus up on a pole, still the same concept though, so, but no, that wasn't really a realistic option that we considered.
I guess I have another question. Is there a way we could see this device in action? Is there a place nearby we could go to to visit it in the daytime and at night to see what that, the experience of that light flashing? Do you know where any?
I believe there's a few installed in Redding, but I don't know any specific locations offhand.
Sorry, just hold on a second. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment if anyone wants to come forward and speak at this time on this matter. You're welcome. Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Julia Martinez, I'm from Paradise, California. I just wanted to add, we implemented that in our town recently, so if you wanted an example, there's several all over town there. That was all I had.
What was your, tell me more about your experience?
I think it's great. We've got some pretty dark streets, and we've got a bike trail that runs through town, so late at night, it's really hard to see pedestrians and having, you know, we've got the lights in the road and then right at the crosswalk, and then we've also got lights at the top of a hill, which, in that particular situation, when you're coming over this hill, you don't see the crosswalk until you're right on top of it, so having those lights beforehand really helps quite a bit, and I think it's great.
So, let me ask you another question. So are you saying that these lights were installed at controlled intersections where there was already a light?
No, these are crosswalks that are unrelated to intersections. Yep.
So are we closing public comment then? Any other public comments? So we'll close public comment, go back to council discussion.
What does staff recommend?
At this point, I'd recommend do nothing.
And why is that?
Cost. You know, it's, is it a perfect solution? Probably not. Will it help? Probably. But really, comes down to costs. I think there's pros and cons for all of these alternatives. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon would be probably the one with the most pros.
Most what?
Pros versus cons.
You know, I cross there quite often, and I leave the office quite often going that way out of the post office. You have people coming around that corner at 40 miles an hour, you can, in a car, pull out and see nobody, and by the time you're three foot out, that car's on you already. I mean, people there do not obey the speed limit, and I would say 40% of the people do not obey the speed limit. In the evening, you have people going to Berryville, going to yoga, going, you know, and nobody, it's just like everybody jaywalks. It's a mess. It's a total mess there, and somebody is, in my opinion, going to get hit. Somebody, in my opinion, is going to get hit at Alpine and Westlake Street, and the study that I saw in here, to me, isn't at all accurate, from my experience. I'm lucky if I get one out of two cars to stop for me when I'm in a crosswalk, and maybe it's because it's me, but, you know, I don't know. But it's, you know, it's, I don't agree with that study at all. I think that's way off base.
Are you referring to the field data that you took?
Yeah, I just think that that's not at all accurate.
It was just one day.
I know. In my opinion, in my experience, it's way off. So, I don't know. I, I think we have to do something, whether it's a 20 mile an hour flashing sign that would be less expensive, but we have to put something there to slow people down around that corner. This has been an irritation of mine since I've moved to town, is that one corner. It's just, I don't know how more people aren't hit, you know? It's just kind of a miracle, in my opinion.
So are you saying Alpine stays Alpine all the way around until it hits Lake?
Whatever that street is, I should know, I work on the corner there. Yeah.
It turns into Mill?
Yeah.
You think it's Mill Street?
Yeah, it's the, it's the street that comes from the post office and comes around that little corner right to East Lake. Yeah.
So you're talking about Lake Street too? You're talking about Lake, where it hits Lake Street and where it hits Mount Shasta?
That's a horrible spot. Yeah, between Doris Moss Realty and RE/MAX where it goes, goes onto East Lake Street.
Across Lake, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I see, we've had several car accidents there in the last couple of years, and, I mean, there's certain people that we actually walk across the street because they're disabled, and nobody will stop for them. So, I mean, it's, we do that a couple times a week, and there's near misses all the time.
So I am somewhat confused. In my mind, I have, I'm picturing two different locations, one being on Lake Street.
Right.
And the other one being on Mount Shasta Boulevard, where people might cross the street, not going to the post office to, say, AGT or vice versa.
Sure, that whole, that whole area.
But perhaps crossing Mount Shasta Boulevard from Berryville going east-west.
Yeah.
Which, and I think that what we're talking about is that location.
Right. You know where you stop on Mount Shasta, leaving the post office to turn on Mount Shasta Boulevard, you can only make a right-hand turn. That's the area where these flashing lights were proposed.
Right, and I think we're talking about the flashing lights across Mount Shasta Boulevard, not across Alpine. Am I correct on that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that, yeah. That, to me, it's just an incredibly dangerous corner, or area, and...
I don't know, I'd like to, I'd like to consider some other solutions. If it's indeed these people going fast around the corner, is there possibility of a warning site closer to the commercial area, so that would be across from the bistro, as they're traveling south, and then heading around the corner, can we flash and say, slow down pedestrians, 20 miles an hour?
That's what we proposed with these.
Yeah.
We proposed one, right by the Black Bear Building, before you turn the corner, it would start flashing there, because they would activate it at, from the post office crossing the Boulevard. They would hit the button, it would start flashing on both sides at the crosswalk, and also that advanced warning for southbound traffic.
Oh, for both places?
Yeah, that was our solution.
And so that's currently what's on the table, is both places?
Well, I mean, everything's on the table, but yeah, that's what we had proposed, as far as what we, we evaluated a lot of the options, it came up with that one for, you know, hey, this might work. And the question is, how long will people obey the, you know, signs?
Rod, there are three options. Optional push-button activation, optional pedestrian motion detector, optional wireless ballard activation.
For the, for these?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we were going to do the push-button activation.
All right, so if somebody's crossing the street in the crosswalk, they push the button, that would activate the lights.
Correct.
And if they don't push the button, then...
No lights.
And so...
Just a sign.
Yeah. So people thinking, if there's no flashing, there's no pedestrians there, and then they get a little careless, so this is, you know, this...
What, why don't we have one that flashes all the time? Wouldn't that be even cheaper?
I think, I think after a certain period of time, motorists just disregard them, because they're going to be flashing all the time, and if they, just a couple times, get conditioned that, hey, this thing's flashing, but there's nobody there, they're going to completely disregard them, and they'll be basically ineffective.
Maybe for free...
And I think that happens regardless, even if they only flash when there's actually someone there. I think, to a certain degree, people get used to it, and will start to ignore even the brightest flashing lights.
If you want to guarantee slow driving, you have to put speed bumps in, and we're not, we're not going to do that, and not going to do that on that road.
Things with just a sign.
Yeah. That's why in local neighborhoods, they go to the speed bumps, where there's a lot of kids on the street, and that really does work.
And that's what kind of leads me to the no, you know, do nothing approach too, it's like, you know, how effective will this be? We think it's going to, in the short term, be pretty effective? Long term, maybe, maybe lose some of that.
What, can we put a 20 mile an hour sign on the traffic entering the curve?
Well, I think you'd be, you'd be posting it less than what it's actually, the speed limit is, so I don't know what the rules are on that.
I don't either.
You can put up whatever signs you want.
Yeah.
The question is, are people going to obey them?
Can we go to a special, special speed limit for that area? Is it, is there anything not legal about going down to 20?
Good question. One of the things that pops in my mind, is that still a state-controlled highway?
It's what, it is?
It's a state-controlled highway.
Is that Highway 99? Is that Highway 99? And if so, then we have to meet state standards. I don't know what it is. If you want us to look at reducing the speed, I would suggest you direct it back to staff. If you, if one of the council members feels that this solution, the flashing, is the best way to go, probably the best thing to do is make a motion and see if you get a second of support.
Here's my sense of things. Number one, I, if I were to vote tonight, I think I'd be voting in support of the flashing lights. Number two, I would prefer to hear from SCORE as to what SCORE can, Information SCORE can tell this city about these sorts of lights, whether it really does have the sort of effect that the manufacturer suggests it has. In terms of expense, I'm not interested in spending any money unnecessarily, but the expense would not be a determining factor as to put in the light or not put in the light, because we're talking about human safety or public safety, and that trumps $13,000 in my mind. I would like to, and I am, I'm making a motion that we table this matter for perhaps a couple weeks, and let's hear back from SCORE, ask staff to contact SCORE and see what Information SCORE might provide regarding this type of system, recognizing it's not specific as to a specific intersection, but in general.
There's a motion on the floor to table this item to, for additional information. Is there a second?
Before I, I'll second it, but before I do, I think we can also take a look, each of us personally, or, and staff too. Another possibility comes to mind, since I drive around there a lot, is, and there's an issue of the shortness of distance between the curve and the crosswalk, of just getting rid of that crosswalk and moving it further south, and establishing a crosswalk where there's more distance between the curve and where people will be crossing. And that, that might be, to me, the best and most efficient, most effective solution, because the issue here is going too fast and coming up on the crosswalk too quickly. So, other, in other words, if we really want to come up with a solution, maybe spend more time coming up with other alternatives besides just flashing lights.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
Are you modifying that motion then? Did you just modify?
I just, I just did.
Okay.
And then I'll second your motion after alternation, altering it.
I'd like to, can I additionally modify the motion?
You can ask.
Can I additionally, can I, can I ask to additionally modify the motion? Is that, are you guys in charge of the motion?
We're in charge of the motion. What's the proposal, so what's your...
Couple things come to mind, one is if it's indeed that the, it's around the curve that's blind, that we have plenty of visual as you're traveling north for pedestrians. What's blind is coming around that bend at too fast a speed, so, and that's more the commercial area. Like I said, I'm concerned about lights flashing in front of residents, which is right across the street from Berryville. If we could move the warning signal, pedestrians crossing, slow down more at the bend before you hit the bend, that...
But that's where it's going to be.
No, I thought that was, is at the crosswalk.
There'll be three flashing beacon signs, northbound and southbound at the crosswalk itself, and then the third one for southbound at the Black Bear before it makes the corner.
All right. So I'm still concerned about the residents, so I would like to at least check in with the resident, and also have an opportunity to actually experience how bright this light is by going to Redding and trying to find one and experience it. So, anyway, I don't know if that's, you can add that, but...
Why don't we keep the motion as it is? And the motion is to gain further information relevant to this type of system, and the potential for increased safety, and also to consider other alternatives.
Second.
Okay, I would like to put this on the next agenda. I don't know if we can get the information. I don't want to wait on this too long, and I like John's idea of moving the crosswalk up a little, because that's where most people cross anyway. They don't really cross in a crosswalk, they jaywalk. So that might be a good solution. I don't know how you feel, Rod?
We've looked at it, as far as identifying other alternatives, we feel like we've laid them all on the table here. I don't know how many more alternatives I can come up with. I don't think I would recommend putting a crosswalk mid-block. Back in, quite some time ago, they mentioned that nine crosswalks were actually eliminated, based on traffic consultant recommendation, they, but for whatever reason, they kept the one at Alpine, and I believe one other, but they eliminated nine total. Nixon Road at Skeevill Drive, right out here, 200 block near Ron's Furniture, there was one mid-block there, they eliminated. One at Water Street, one at Sisson Street, and these are all on Mount Shasta Boulevard. One at Sheldon, one at Holly, and at Lake between Pine Street and the railroad tracks. They eliminated all those crosswalks because they were mid-block, mid-block crosswalks, and they did not want them.
Okay.
So to move this one down, no. I'm not even considering that as an alternative.
Okay, I understand.
Is there a crosswalk over at the Pancho's? Is that, that's water?
Don't believe so. I think that's one that they...
They catch.
I think that's one that they, is there one there still?
Like Pancho's and Bay County?
Look at Google Maps and see.
Right.
The next one down, there's one crossing at the barber shop at Smith Street.
Smith Street, yeah.
And then...
And there's one, Mike and Tom's.
So nothing between Smith Street and Alpine?
The next one is pretty close to Ida Street, crossing, it's another mid-block that, at the auto parts store there. So, there's, there's still a few. I mean, if council was leaning towards, you know, relocating this one, I would just say eliminate it, and so people don't necessarily cross there, they might cross more mid-block, and by going into the theory that, hey, they might be safer crossing at their own risk than in a crosswalk that, where they might feel protected. If you take that crosswalk away, now... If you take that crosswalk away, um, now all of a sudden they have to pay more attention. So that might be the best way to go.
So move, move to eliminate the crosswalk? Do I have a second?
There's a motion pending that's out of order.
Yeah.
I think you can do a motion after a motion.
You have a motion, you have to vote on it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor with a second. Um, Tim moved, um, John seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval? Do you have, do you need clarification on the motion, Catherine or anything? So, item number 10, award 2018 window replacement project, Rod.
I'm sorry, did we make it to the next?
Yeah, item number 10, the window replacement.
So, another window replacement project. Same situation as last year. We put it out to bid, nobody showed up. Got a bid later after the big opening date and we went with that bid. Same thing this year, Sea League Construction submitted a bid. This, at least they got it in on the same day of the bid opening. So, uh, last year we had consulted with the city attorney that, and made sure that all, um, public bidding requirements were met. Uh, he concurred again this year that, yeah, you've met your obligations for public bidding. You can go ahead and give it, you know, award the contract to the only bidder. So that's what we're recommending that we do. Uh, they submitted a bid, actually, the staff report says $13,490. Their final bid, once they got the formal written bid in, was $13,180. And so we have $20,000 budgeted this fiscal year for this project to replace the seven windows in City Hall with the same exact windows that were, that were put, uh, at the police department building last year. And so that's what we are recommending is, is adopting the resolution, um, awarding the bid to Sea League in the amount of $13,180 and authorizing the city manager execute the agreement and issue a notice to proceed.
Okay. Since there's no public, are there any clarifying questions from council? Seeing none, I'm gonna just open the public comment and close it. There's no public. Ready to entertain a motion or if there's any discussion?
I move adoption of resolution number CCR 18-46. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Shasta awarding the 2018 window replacement project contract to Sea Lake Construction Corporation in the amount of $13,180 and authorizing the city manager execute the agreement and issue a notice to proceed.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Motion by Tim Stern, seconded by John Stackfleth. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, unanimous approval. Item number 13, discussion and possible action request for proposal for solid waste franchise, Muriel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, before you is a request for proposal for solid waste handling. John Smith Sanitations contract is ending April 1st, 2019. We would like to go out, uh, for proposals for a franchise agreement. Uh, the information that you have hopefully received either online or, uh, in, uh, paper form, this, this proposal and agreement is quite large. I think, uh, we've gone for as wide or as broad a proposal as we can to try to, to add some services that are, are not provided at this time. It's also, um, broad enough to hopefully, um, make a proposer realize that we're looking toward the future, 10 years down the line to hopefully meet the requirements that the state of California is, may be, um, making all cities do and in the form of, uh, solid waste, recycling, green waste, food waste, all of those sorts of things. I wanted to bring that in, into this proposal. So whoever is doing, uh, a proposal will take those things into consideration and work with us in, in developing those particular programs. Um, I'd like to open it up now for questions from you. Hopefully I'll be able to answer them. I, I do know that there is, there is some, some local interest, um, in the request. I actually talked to, uh, a person today who, uh, is rather close to us, not in Siskiyou County, but in Shasta County, that, that may be interested in doing a proposal. So, um, I'm hoping for the best.
Okay. Any clarifying questions for Muriel?
So, Muriel, you mentioned that one of your hopes through this, um, to be realized through this RFP and then the execution of a contract would be that the provider or franchisee would, um, help us to get to the state mandated requirements of reducing waste stream, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Um, do you, do you feel it's, I'll have to read the whole thing, but do you feel that it's, uh, this, this is clear to potential applicants or?
I, I believe that it will be.
Okay.
Basically, they can, can propose the same type of, of service that we're providing now if they wanted to. But really, what I'm looking forward to is having a proposer that proposes, uh, an automated system at some point in the future, um, to take into consideration, uh, solid waste, well, and the safety of their employees is another because if it's automated, they're not lifting and, and doing those sorts of things, thus reducing workers' compensation for them, and actually making it much more efficient. So that's, that's-
So your, your goal is to have a more, hopefully a more modern system overall-
Correct.
Provided by a franchisee that is also using modern technologies such as automated robotized arms for picking up the, uh, the containers. And that, that certainly exists in large cities right now.
Absolutely.
And in Yreka.
Yeah.
They have that, so. It's very close.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
And for clarification purposes, this would be a change of the arrangement that we have at the present time because currently the city has been responsible for billing and collecting and paying the, the various fees. The franchisee would then take over that responsibility, is that correct?
That is correct.
And because we haven't gotten any responses back and we don't know what kind of responses we're gonna get back, we don't know how that's gonna impact our monthly payment at all at this point.
Not at this point.
Okay. Paul?
When, when are the state mandated requirements going to be in effect?
They're coming along all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And, and increasing all the time. I think we have a mandate for 2020 for a certain percentage of, of recycling.
Okay. We don't really have a facility for a couple of these items yet.
That's correct and that's, it, it's specified that way in, in the proposal.
Right, yeah. What, what, excuse me, what happens in that situation?
Well, what, what we'd wanna have in the agreement is that once we have a mandate from the state of California that the contractor at that point would be working with the city to determine a way in which to meet that requirement. Uh, not having it in the, having it in the agreement to begin with would mean we would have to renegotiate and redo things at that point to meet those mandates.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is what happens if the company that we hire says, you know, we can't do this and we can't find anyone to do it? What happens to us? We get fined or?
Well, the, the contractor, the, the contractor would be fined.
Okay, so the responsibility for the-
Responsibility transfers to the franchisee, yes.
Okay. It would be a great business. Works in other areas.
And Muriel, you did give my little comment about, you had this chart at the very beginning and I'd love to see you add that September 14th or 15th deadline on there as well.
For questions?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Alright, um-
One more question.
Okay.
And Muriel, in terms of, I think there was some reference to, uh, uh, a pre-bid meeting? And if that in fact is the case, would there be, uh, could potential bidders or contractors, uh, attend that electronically or, or by go-to-meeting, Skype, some other means?
Mm-hmm, we can do that.
That would be, uh, I think that would be, uh, helpful, desirable.
A pre-bid conference?
Pardon?
A pre-bid conference.
A pre-bid conference might be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, any more?
I like the fact that you've put in all of the, the state stuffs coming into future and, you know, you've, it looks like you've covered all the bases.
Well, I tried to and I actually tried to add services as well. For instance, the, the holiday tree removal, the, uh, working with, with the city when we have events, the, the, um, bulky item type things. All the things that people, um, have complained about, that I've heard complaints about. Um, also a, a carryout service for, for folks that would, can't, um, actually get their, their waste to the point where they can pick it up, that going through a particular, um, through their doctor to get a, a, uh, basically a form that says they're unable to, to do that and have no one else in their home to do that, then we would provide the service for, or the contractor would provide the service to, to bring it out for them.
You're calling it the scout service?
Scout service, yes, indeed, so.
That is a real good, good proposal you wrote.
I move the City Council-
Oh. There's no one in the public, but I just wanna open and close the public comment, just noting there's no one present. And back to motion.
I move the City Council, uh, authorize issuance of the, uh, RFP for franchise agreement to provide solid waste services for the city of Mount Shasta.
With amendments or?
With amendments.
With a couple amendments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, second, uh, motion was made by Tim Stern, second by John Stackfleth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous approval? Um, next, item number 12, uh, do you need clarification on, um, the modifications, Muriel, on that? No, okay. Okay, so item number 12, council reports on attendance and appointed outside meetings, there are none. Item number 13, future agenda items. Um, does anyone have any suggestions for future agenda items? We mentioned one earlier, we'd like the, uh, crosswalk to come back, is that the one?
Yes.
So we are asking, requesting that the crosswalk item-
Crosswalk should be on September 10th meeting.
September, to be on the September 10th meeting, yes.
And I, and I have a question regarding, uh, item A, orchard property annexation scheduled for September 10th. I don't understand, I don't understand why that would be scheduled for September 10th since we, I thought we were, uh, holding back on that until, uh, we had further progress, made further progress on the, uh, renegotiation of the, uh, the landing. So, what am I missing?
Well, the council had asked for a report, uh, from staff on annexation of the orchard property, process, estimated cost, timelines. That's what we'll be coming back to you on the 10th. The question, the tax sharing agreement is an ongoing discussion and I put out a memo to the council last week in which I suggested we drop the modification of the tax shared agreement off the agenda at this point in time because we're, we are presently working on a grant to hire a consultant to put together enhanced infrastructure financing district, which, once that is completed, that would be the bargaining argument that we would take to the county that would demonstrate the need to modify that tax sharing agreement and to ext, what extent. So I would leave, it, it, it's really a council decision. Do you want to discuss annexation of the orchard property at this point in time? We have no development proposals for that property at this point, so we could hold off on it if you choose to.
But, but, but you're going to give a presentation on the 10th of September regarding the whys and wherefores of, of doing that annexation, right? So it's more of an informational re, report?
Yes.
And then what, what would, would you be asking the council?
You could decide if you wanna move forward or now if you wanna hold off.
At that-
You have a clearance.
So you could just give the report and we could decide to wait until?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to hear the report myself.
Yeah.
So we're all okay with having the report, okay?
Okay.
Um, any other additions?
And what you would do with item F?
Uh, in terms of item G, uh, active transportation committee membership and purpose slash scope. I understand that there, uh, an RFP opens up September 5th, I think it is, uh, for active transportation funding. Uh, carries, goes through, I think, a couple of months after that. Uh, city of Yreka has already put together a, uh, a grant proposal, uh, to, uh, extend, uh, bike path, um, in anticipation of trying to get some of that funding. We had talked about the city seeking funding also, uh, some of those funds. So could we make some progress on, on that in terms of, uh, potential grant application for some of the city's, uh, bike path, uh, alternative transportation needs?
Are you suggesting a future agenda item to see a report on our response to the RFP?
No, I, no, have we?
What are you, what are you asking for exactly? Are you giving direction to staff?
No, I'm asking a question.
Is the question of the trans, the committee or the lack thereof because we have nobody, we have one applicant pending. We can't hold a meeting, we have no quorum, we have no active transportation committee meeting. So, um, this, this has been in this, this committee has been in this status for some time now. So you might look at what is the purpose of this committee? It's, uh, perhaps it should be a broader purpose and you might attract more participants.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen any articles in the newspaper saying we need people, this is what this committee does, this is why this committee is so important. This is what the city, uh, what this committee has done in the past. It's brought in millions of dollars to the city, uh, that has resulted in X, Y, and Z. Haven't seen anything like that in the newspaper, haven't seen anything like that, uh, on the internet. I would suggest, um, uh, perhaps staff can go forward and, and put out the word in a public fashion, uh, that this is an important committee. Uh, explain who could be on the committee, explain why this committee is important, how it's been effective in the past and why we need people on the committee to make it effective in the present and going forward.
If that is the council's direction, we'd be happy to do that. We have brought this to the council in the past. We have had announcements out about this. That's why we have the one person that applied. Uh, we had a couple of people issued, but they never turned in applications. So we could do more perhaps.
Giovanni's looking for a, a public service announcement or, or press release or something from, from the city on, on this matter, I think.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motions?
Well, I, I don't think I can make that in the form of a motion because it's not an agenda item.
So do you wanna, do you wanna calendar this?
I would just, I would encourage-
Would you wanna calendar this for a future agenda item and talk about the purpose? Have the city staff propose a purpose for us to review?
No, I would just encourage staff to, uh, take some, um, proactive efforts- No, I would just encourage staff to take some proactive efforts along the lines that I've described.
Okay. We'll take some proactive efforts, and then we'll see what happens, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Anything else? Then we can adjourn, then? All right, thank you.